This is a special podcast presentation from 700 W L W dot com. This is Doc Thompson on demand.
I want blood. That's what I'm talking about. I like elected servants who are in there fiercely defending those tax dollars that all of us work so hard and end up paying. I want blood. That's what I like to hear. Councilwoman Leslie Gies joins me now. Good morning, how are you?
Hi, I'm good. I'm gonna preface this by saying I've got my six month old with me. And he may make some noise here in the background, but I don't like to leave him, you know, in the room by himself quite yet.
No worries. When I, I'll tell you what, though, I saw when you were talking about Diana Frye and you said you want blood because you were frustrated, I said, that's what I want to hear. People are in there defending those tax. You know what? I'm not even giving you a chance. Just based on that statement, I'm gonna go ahead and announce your candidacy for president.
Oh, okay.
I'm gonna announce that.
I think there are a lot of people who would disagree with you, but I tend to, I'm just angry. I'm very angry. Um, and, and, you know, as everybody out there should be. And here's why I'm more angry than I normally would be. If that gets too loud, let me know. Sorry about that.
No, we're okay, we're okay.
Um, anyway, uh, normally, let's say this were, you know, when I first got on council, I would be mad that taxpayer money was spent. But what bothers me the most is the fact that we have the unemployment rate that we have out there. We've got all these people clamoring for jobs. We've got people who would give their right arm for a job with the city. And this is what we get. And then the city manager just goes, oh yeah, well, we got bamboozled.
Well, and $64,000 a year is a pretty good job, too.
It's a great job. And, and, you know, the bottom line is, that is, that's not acceptable. And they didn't get bamboozled because according to the emails that were received by the Inquirer, they knew, they knew she wasn't there. They knew, you know, they, they didn't have any accountability for this woman. And yet, they just went, ah, it's no big deal.
I could, listen, I, if, if, if everybody isn't frustrated about this, this is not party affiliation, it's not ideology, it simply says, if you show, if you have a job that you're getting paid for, show up to work and do the job.
Oh, can you imagine if you were in the, I just, I talk about this all the time. I can't imagine if you were in the private sector and your supervisor, the supervisor wouldn't have even sent an email to somebody higher up. They would have just fired you.
Now technically, she's, she's still employed, right? It's going, they're going through the process of...
As far as I know, I, I, you know, there is certain, as far as I know, yes, but they're trying to terminate her.
Okay.
Um, and there's some process because I'm sure because she's in a union that they have to go through, even though they're just going through the motions. I don't think there's gonna be any objection to this.
It's, but, but that's a good point, though, you know, that still at, what is this, a month since the official initial, and she's still technically employed. Like you said, there's probably not gonna be an objection, but technically, she's still there.
Right. And, and just the whole, anyway, the, the whole thing that gets my ire on this is, remember, I used to be in human resources. I used to be the chief labor negotiator 10 years ago. And we used to monitor, I used to fight with my supervisor, who was the human direct, human resources director at that time, a different one, about the same exact thing, saying, you know, they are, you know, they can only use 1,000 hours. They can only use 1,000 hours. That's what they've got in their contract. If they go over that, that's it. And what they would do every time, maybe in the unions, they'd go over my head to him and he would let them do whatever they wanted. And I was complaining about it 10 years ago, and it wasn't nearly this bad. I mean, we're talking, it was barely over, you know, utilization of the 1,000 hours. And, and for, for a supervisor to say she is never here and everybody knows it, and for that to go to human resources, because the buck in the labor department stops with human resources. I mean, they're the ones that say, this is what you do when it comes to labor issues. And, and they just didn't do anything. They just turned their head. And for the manager to act like that's okay, that one of his directors did this, is beyond, is just beyond comprehension. I can't get over it. And so when the paper called me and was telling me, you know, what's going on, because I sent a memo saying, I want some accountability on this, that means you better look into this and you better discipline the people responsible. And for the manager's office to come back to me and go, well, what do you want? We had a hearing. That hearing was a bunch of baloney. And it was a bunch of baloney because they didn't answer any questions. The questions were asked and they didn't do anything about the questions that were asked. They just sort of went, oh yeah, we understand, yeah, we, you know, we were trying to foster labor, you know, negotiate, or labor relations with the unions. That's baloney. They have very good relationships with every single union. And to say that, like, code for some reason stood out and was a special exception is wrong.
There just seems no oversight. That's what it really seems like.
There isn't any oversight. And they don't care. They know it's happening, they don't realize how important it is when you're talking about taxpayer dollars. When I was in human resources, they start, they put a time clock in and we had to clock our, our hours because it was that important, that they were tracking time to that degree. And I don't know if it still exists over there because it's been so long. But we, I literally would walk in in the morning, even though it's professional staff, and I would clock, you know, hit a clock and pull my card out and do it when I left and do it when I left for lunch. And, I mean, you know, they, they obviously calculate time. So, um, anyway, you know, what, what upset me to such a degree is when I get a call from the, from the paper last week and they're like, yeah, what's happened? And I'm like, nothing's happened. That's the problem. And they, you know, they're like, well, what do you want? Well, I want somebody's head to roll. I want some blood. I want something to be done about this. So that an example is set, so this never, ever, ever happens again. If something like this is brought to a supervisor's attention, they don't blink, they say tough. And they, you know, they say, that's it, you're fired, you're disciplined, you're not here.
So, so are you looking for, and I would only imagine you're looking for two things. Number one, punishment of all people that are culpable. I mean, whether it's her, anybody else who looked the other way, were, were not doing their job, number one. And number two, some sort of, of change so it prevents it from happening in the future.
Absolutely, absolutely. They can't even tell us they want, that they'll do that. Um, I mean, that's the thing, to, to come to my office and tell me that, what do you want? What do you think I want? I mean, you're not stupid. You guys are where you are for a reason. You're city manager for a reason, you're a bright guy. You know damn well what I want. I want somebody to be held accountable for this.
Are you seeing any concern or enough concern from anybody else on council, around city government, city manager, anybody?
No, no. I mean, I, me, you know, there've been a few of us who've spoken up. Me, Wendell Young has spoken up, Wayne Lippert has spoken up, Amy Murray, they were in that meeting last week. Wendell Young called the meeting, you know, the, for the manager to come in and explain it. The problem was, he called it on such an odd day in the middle of the summer at 10:00 AM in the morning that, you know, half the committee didn't show up. And I couldn't go, I'm not on the committee. But, you know, because it was at such a bizarre time. If it had been at a regularly scheduled time or, you know, a little more notice, I would have made a point, you know, figured out how to get there. But, but the point being, nobody besides us are asking questions and nobody's following up. I mean, that's the thing. This happens all the time at the city. And nobody follows up with it. And it just so happens in this case, you've really set me off when you sit there and tell me that it's okay, what happened, oh, poor us, poor us, my rear end. You guys knew this was happening, you had a supervisor complaining to you about it, and you ignored it.
I got an email from Steve who brings up a great question, Leslie, and that is, is her job even needed? Is that position needed? One of two things.
I have no idea, I have no idea.
Well, either somebody else was doing that job, in which case you don't need her, or her job wasn't needed to begin with if she wasn't showing up. I mean, or was that much work missing?
Well, that's, you know, that's a great point. That's a great point. And, and I think people were probably covering for it, would be my guess. Because if, if it wasn't needed, the supervisor never would have sent an email to begin with. And the only person who isn't culpable in that is that, that lady who sent the, the email to human resources saying, you guys need to do something about this.
All right, so what are we gonna do? How we, I mean, right now, people are driving around the tri-state, even if they're not in Cincinnati, they recognize this stuff could happen and has happened in their community, the state level, federal, what do we do? How are we gonna take care of it?
Well, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna get with one of the, um, probably not, um, government operations, but I'm gonna get a hearing called, even if I have to call the hearing on my own, a special hearing, get the manager, get the human resources director in there. And I'm gonna say I want accountability right in front of them. And I'm gonna not give them an option. Then we're gonna go and we're gonna figure out a policy and we're gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna push a policy with council members, you get five council members to sign on saying, this is the letter of the law. And this is what human resources is to do from now on. And if one hour over the allotted union time is spent, that person takes time without pay.
It seems very reasonable.
It, it is very reasonable. But it, you know, we get all the, I, I have never had a straight answer from the administration in six years of working with them. Never. I mean, if I told a client, if I told, didn't give a client a straight answer when they asked me a question in my law practice, I'd get fired.
I don't know how anybody could object to this. I, I would think you'd get unanimous support.
It's logic, and what kills me, what kills me the most is the silence from city council, as though it's okay, it's done, she's getting in trouble with the federal government, what are we gonna do? You know, we got other things to be looking at, we're not, we don't care. I mean, it amazes me.
But you've gotta look beyond it.
The silence is deafening.
Right, you've gotta look beyond just her, though. I mean, is the system, is anybody else involved?
Oh, everybody needs to be looked at. Every bit, every contract that has union time in it, we need to evaluate it. But I will tell you, there is, and I keep saying this, and I think it's in, I think we don't have the issue with fire, because fire, they're 24 hours on, 48 hours off. So they get most, the majority of their work done in the off time. So that isn't, they aren't really a problem. Police are not a problem because police pay for their union president to be full time.
Right.
So their absence from work is not an issue. The issue comes in when it comes to code and it comes to ASME. Because ASME has six different local unions within one group. Each one has a steward and a president and a vice president, and they all have to come to disciplinary, you know, hearings. And they all have to show up at negotiations. It can't just have one person show up for negotiations. And as a result of that, far more than 1,000, I guarantee far more than 1,000 hours are used by that, by that union. And in Code's case, nobody knew what she was doing and she was spending full time on union business.
I have noticed this, uh, all around the country, in, in different ways. Now hers was, she was doing union business, so she wasn't showing up, or that's, you know, what, what the claim is. But I've noticed all around the country, in the last few months, I see these stories pop up with people who were working for different levels of government and just not showing up from work. I mean, a dozen or so stories. One of them that all people across the country should be concerned about was a, a local community service board out of Norfolk, Virginia, where an employee didn't show up for 12 years. They get federal funding, state funding, and local funding. We're all on the hook for that. No punishment has been handed down because of the way the situation rolled out, they told her to stay home with pay. And there's no accountability, none of her, her administrators, anybody's ever been punished. And this stuff just goes on.
It's amazing to me, and then everybody goes, oh my God, what are we doing with our money? We're giving our money to the federal government, we're giving our money to local government, we're giving, and then here's the kicker. We fight every year at the city level for how much, you know, little nickels and dimes, you know, to put together, to cobble together money to save programs. $64,000? I mean, we could have used that to, you know, put toward our pools, or put toward our community gardens, or put toward our police, or put toward, you know, anything. And, and yet, this, and then the kicker is, the, the department just kind of bats their eyes, the, you know, the human resources department bats their eyes as though this is normal. It's not normal, it's a neglect of duty. I mean, you have a fiduciary duty, when you are the director of the human resources department, you damn well know, better know what you're doing. And you shouldn't, especially when you're in the public sector, you darn well better know that you're dealing with taxpayer dollars. So every minute has to be accountable for. This is not private sector.
As an elected servant, I would think that is one of your primary goals, is to protect them.
It is, it's what just kills me about the whole thing is, we have no idea till the, you know, thank God for the Inquirer blowing the lid on it. We would have never known because we're so insulated. I mean, unless, unless employees tell us, and that's how I found out what was going on at the very last minute with Diana Frye, an employee told me, unless an employee comes to us directly or sends us an email or sends us a text about it, we wouldn't be none the wiser.
Plus, you're also in that, that weird, you know, the sewer district is to do with, you know, the county and the city and all the, the difficulties there trying to, you know, manage.
Right, right, right. But the point is, other employees know this is going on. You think that helps, other employees just get resentful. They're working their rear ends off, they're doing two times the work these days for the same salary, and she's never there, and people are getting resentful. And they, you know, I mean, the cannot help morale when that's the case.
So the accountability is all of ours, too.
Oh, it is, but it's, it's just the fact that it did get brought, you know, a number of times to the attention of human resources and they turned a blind eye. They just said, don't do anything about it. If this, you know, if, if nobody had known this, if those emails had never gone out and this was just, you know, she was gone and nobody ever alerted, you know, anybody higher up to it, that's one thing, to say, we really didn't know. And then you put a process in place so that you do know in the future. But the fact that you knew and you try to play like it's no big deal, we just thought we were doing it out of the goodness of our hearts, well, tell that to Joe Taxpayer, who has to write the check to the city of Cincinnati every year, that isn't happy about that. Tell that to the sanitation workers who need their jobs and are, you know, fight for their jobs every single week because, you know, they, they're worried about managed competition, they're worried about privatization. I mean, tell that to those people.
Well, I'm glad you're in there and I hope you stay on it.
Well, thank you, I will. You know me, it's, it's like, I'm like, I, I, I'm like a dog with a bone. I get it, and I just, I'll just, I'm tenacious. So we'll see, especially in issues like this, this is so simple.
All right, well, thanks so much.
Dog, it's great talking to you.
Thank you so much. It's Councilwoman Leslie Gies. She's absolutely right. How can you not be outraged? This is unanimously, across the board, all of the council people, the city manager, the mayor, everybody should just be outraged in saying, we are gonna get to the bottom. Two things, number one, punish all of those involved, not just Diana Frye, and don't allow it to just be, you know, a federal crime, you know, that she faces. No, no, if something was done locally, you gotta punish her. If other people looked the other way, if they are culpable in this, they must be punished. And second of all, how are you gonna prevent this from happening in the future? So what about her, her pension? Should she, have you thought about that? Is she eligible for her pension? I'll give you the details on that next, 700 W L W. Fox 19 Storm Tracker forecast from meteorologist Frank Marsillo. Sunshine supposed to be coming this afternoon, pretty comfortable, nice day in store, high around 80, clear skies tonight, low 60, 65 now at 700 W L W. So what about Diana Frye's pension? Boy, that would tick you off, wouldn't it? Imagine you're somebody that's actually doing your job, not just for the sewer district, but any, any government position. Find out that she would be eligible for her pension? Oh my golly. Well, Hamilton County judge extended his order late last week for Cincinnati not to release any pension payments. Frozen, at least temporarily. Any pension benefits for Frye that would, that she would be entitled to when she's no longer a city employee. Right, well, if you're not showing up for work, how do you get a pension? That's a pretty good job, right? You don't show up, you get paid. When they find out that maybe you haven't been doing the right things, you get a pension. In that case, I'd say, why are you still going to work? Just go, announce yourself. Listen, I haven't been showing up and I may have embezzled $757,000. I would have announced it a week ago, a year ago, could you still get your pension for not showing up? That's Diana Frye from Code. Cincinnati's organized and dedicated employees. If she begins receiving her pension, she might either spend or try to hide it or something like that is the argument. But I don't think that has, I mean, you know, spend it or help her, you know, with their legal defense or get out of town. Any, no, it's just wrong and right. It doesn't matter what she does with it. If she was not showing up to work, if she was shirking her duties, if she was not doing what she was getting paid for, why the hell does she get a pension? It's bad enough she was getting a paycheck for not doing it. So you freeze it and you say, listen, until it's determined that she was, in fact, doing her job, she's not getting her pension. Now, if they say, listen, she was doing her job, it's no fault of hers that she, uh, you know, was doing union work, she didn't violate any laws, any rules, regulations, anything like that, okay, fine, give her her pension. It's not what she does with it, that has nothing to do with it. If she was not doing her job, it's bad enough you gave her pay for that, she should not get the pension and you should go back on her and demand that money back that you paid her when she didn't do her job. Doc Thompson on the Big One, 700 W L. Doc Thompson on the Big One, 700 W L W. You have one of those coworkers? One of those coworkers you just can't stand? I have one of those coworkers that everybody hates. Everybody in the office just hate him, right? We have one, some of you may know him as Tracy Jones. Well, as you're driving to work today, you get to work today and that person, you're like, there he is, look at him, Pete. Right? You may owe that coworker an apology. In fact, we owe Tracy Jones an apology, and I'll explain it about 9:52 this morning. All right, so there's an issue that popped up last week about a, um, a local business that is simply trying to expand their business and do well. It's a skyline, chili. And they're running into some zoning issues with the city. In fact, the owner, Steve Misla, was on with Willie last week to talk a little bit about it. He's saying that the city planning department is obstructing the expansion plans because of a rule that says that there must be 60% glass on the front wall of the building. Now, he wants to move the front wall forward, it has a couple of windows, but it also has a big mural of a 1940 skyline. He wants to move it closer to the sidewalk. Now, he was on with Willie and laid the whole thing out, but I got an email, somebody said, Doc, listen, you need to get all the information. He's saying that their real issue is that they wouldn't be able to get a variance moving it closer to the street, so they're making a big issue out of the mural in that. And that may be the case. But you know what? I've dealt with government and variances so many times in my life that I understand all of the problems on both sides. What a horrible, horrible thing to have to go through. Most of the time, there is no common sense. People are stuck rigidly to, well, you can't do that, or you get some crackpot neighbor who simply doesn't like you, who's stopping you from doing it, or one person with an agenda, whatever it is. But I would say this, does it really matter if you move the wall 10 feet closer? Whether it's the, because of the mural or the glass, does it really matter? It's not 60% glass? Damn, look around. Businesses are dropping like flies, people are jumping out of the Midwest like, like rats off a sinking ship. Let's create some jobs, let some businesses expand for whatever the reason. But I'm gonna lay out what Steve has to say. This is an interview with Willie from late last week.
So you got the money, and so you're thinking, okay, let's expand the business. What happened?
Correct. Well, we, we met with the architect and we got plans set, drawn and ready to go. And, uh, my brother Mike hand-delivered them on, on or about June 16th, that week.
About two months ago, you went to the city and said, hey, here are the plans, business here, been here, been, been and missed 50 years, we got the bank loan, it's Oakley, we want to expand. And they said?
Went down there with a check and the plans, handed them to, uh, Galen Hill, Rodney Ringer, whoever's down in the zoning planning department.
And here it is.
Okay? And, uh, they, they got the plans according to them on June 21st. Now, by their own rules and guidelines, they have five days to respond if the application asks for variance or it's incomplete or anything of that sort.
Tell you what, five days, we'll be in good shape.
June 26th, okay, we can make this work.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, because we know we have to go to a hearing. I'm not, there's a hearing involved.
I'm sure there is, yes.
Right. So, we didn't hear anything. Finally got it on the city website of internet or text or something on July 8th.
A little bit longer, about three times longer than it should have been.
That's, that's, that's a very important three times. That's, that's, that's a lot of days.
You're ready to go.
Well, on July 15th, an email came our way and it said, basically, we're booked through July, you're laid out five weeks, see you later.
It's a tater. So now, and you're saying, wait a minute, I got a business to operate, I'm shutting down Labor Day weekend, five weeks is like, what?
Well, it just completely blew our schedule apart. Now, if, if this is flipped and turned on June 26th, and they come back and say, you've got five weeks, that puts me at the beginning of August.
Okay, that's, that's Labor Day, that's getting closer.
All right, now we can maybe make this thing all work together. I didn't plan on it being five weeks, but it would have been fine.
Did they say any reason why they violated their own rules?
They haven't said anything.
Nothing, okay.
All right, see right there, right, right there. If you're not in, if you're not in contact with a business owner that's been there a while, that's paying taxes and creating jobs regardless of what side you fall on the issue, then you're at fault, I'm sorry. How do, how do you, how do you snub a business owner who's creating jobs and paying taxes? What do you, what are you doing? How is that a good idea? How are you not in contact? Listen, if a business owner comes to you this afternoon and says, listen, we got something we need to slam through, and you're expected to jump through hoops, yeah, that's probably not, not the best. You don't necessarily have time, you should do what you can for them. But as an elected servant, I understand you may not have the time. But if it's going on weeks and months, and you're not in contact over something so ridiculous, do you know how many times I have seen this? Countless in my own personal life and my family's life. Simply trying to, you know, build a shed on your property, put up a tree, cut something down, expand a business. And it doesn't matter the community, you got a neighbor next door who simply doesn't want to agree to a variance for no reason. I mean, I understand sometimes if it's a, it's an obstruction of their view or it causes them some harm, but most of the time, it's not. And why does a 60% glass front actually matter? Or that much closer to the street? Those bells, look around. Do you really see great zoning in the tri-state? No, of course not. There is not great zoning. Here's what happens. When you've got cities that have a great, long history, they expand outward, you've seen growth out in Claremont County and other areas, out into Indiana and over into northern Kentucky, a city will, will see expansion from its core out in a ring. And those areas, if they were once rural, you get big chunks of land, they have better planning, better zoning. It's a little bit easier. I've mentioned before on the air, when I was in Albuquerque, it was a relatively small town once upon a time, they've had great growth as people have migrated to the southwest, they want the weather. And it's a lot easier for them because they've got this land that's really close to the center of town. As they expand their ring, it's pretty easy. See, but here, we've also got redevelopment of other communities. And that's the reason you see, if you go around, you're trying to shove a, a new housing unit or development into a little area that was already there, but somebody didn't give up their farm, or you're redeveloping something, there's not great zoning. You've got stuff that as you drive down the road, you look at, you go, really? Should a factory be there? Should there be a housing development right there? Boy, that's weird. How can these roads come together this way? So unless you're planning on really going after it, let the business go. Now, if you want to hear more of what he had to say with Willie, you can hear the entire thing, it's an hour or two of Willie's Friday show. Just go to 700 W L W dot com, find Willie's blog, and you can hear the entire thing in find Willie's blog, and you can hear the entire thing in its entirety. I'll give you another example of, of really bad government rules. This is hilarious and ridiculous. We'll do it next. On the Big One, 700 WLW. Get in on Doc's Deal of the Week. Just go to 700WLW.com, click on the Trade and Paper link. Our Deal of the Week this week, a 2009 Audi A4 Premium at Subaru of Kings Auto Mall for just $27,995. That's a pretty good deal. Just go to the blog, 700WLW.com, click on the Trade and Paper link for the Deal of the Week. If it happens there, it's coming here. Doesn't matter where there is, but especially if the there is California. Nutty things happen all the time. The silly restaurant ban, smoking ban, start in California. If it happens there, it's coming here. Well, legislators there, their, their state legislature returning from a recess, and they've got a bunch of bills to consider. There's some things that they're working on. Now, in the past, they've considered things like outlawing spanking your children in 2007. That ended up failing. Ban on trans fats, requiring calorie counts to appear on menus, which, by the way, that's gonna come nationally next year. They wanted to prohibit dairies from docking cow's tails in the past. All of these things come out of California, and some of the nutty things I've said, ended up getting implemented. So now they have a new one. They would require hotels have fitted sheets. All hotels in the Golden State would have to have fitted sheets. Not the flat sheets that you tuck in, but the fitted ones, with like, the elastic and that. Why? To protect housekeepers. Housekeeping! Housekeeping! To protect the maids. Protect them? I have no idea what it means to protect them. What they're claiming is, that a bunch of the maids have back problems, because they have to bend over and tuck in those fitted sheets. And because of that, they need, I don't, wouldn't you also have to tuck in the fitted sheets? You have to tuck in the fitted sheets, too. No, I mean, you don't tuck them in the same way, but you have to pull them tight. They say, well, the mattresses, when you don't have the fitted sheets, they're lifting them up, and they're heavy. Well, again, with the fitted sheets, you gotta lift them up a little bit there, to, to make sure the fitted part's in when you pull it tight. Doesn't matter. Uh, the lawmaker is proposing this. He says, my mother was a housekeeper and worked herself to the bone. Housekeepers have the highest rate of lower back injuries in the hotel industry, and these workers deserve much better. It would also require special tools enable maids to clean bathrooms, without having to stoop or get on their hands and knees. All of these pending in California State Legislature. They would also require hospitals to provide patient lifting equipment as a separate bill. These bills are both being pushed by the union out there. Now, the hotel industry, as much as this may sound nice, says that, you know what? This could cost $30 million just to replace all of the sheets. $30 million statewide, there are sheets and the other equipment necessary. And who do you think would pay that? Well, if you're planning a trip to Los Angeles, or San Francisco, or anywhere else in California, you and I would pay for it. We would. They're not gonna do with less. And it's really not gonna solve the problem. Fitted sheets in the Golden State, that's a great idea. Tell you what, let's make people pay more for their hotel room, at a time when every state is trying to get every dollar, and tourism is a big part of California. Excellent idea. Another capitalist idea from a big government. Doc Thompson, 700 WLW. You got a bad coworker? Everybody in the office hates Pete. You may owe Pete an apology today. Because I'll bet he's not as bad a coworker as you may have previously thought. See, I had to think that way about Tracy Jones. A horrible coworker. Terrible. But then over the weekend, I thought, you know what? I may owe Tracy Jones an apology. Well, I started thinking, he's probably not as bad a coworker as I initially thought. Not as bad as a gentleman out of Austria. An Austrian museum has fired an employee for washing his hands and face with his own urine. With his own urine. It's part of his urine therapy. He's 57 years old. His name is Alfred Zopelt. He says he was fired after 23 years, working as an attendant at the Belvedere Castle in Vienna. He says his adherence to urine therapy was previously never a problem, but has become a problem. He says, his notice from Belvedere says the reason he was fired, quote, "You regularly rub urine into your skin, particularly your face and hands. With this, you soil your place of work, and threaten the health of your coworkers." Apparently, believers in urine therapy, they say they get either a medical or a cosmetic benefit from taking their urine, rubbing it into their hands, all over their skin, about their head, shoulders, and face. Urinther- Now, sure, Pete's annoying. He may be lazy, may not do his job. He may be a kiss-ass. He may frustrate you all day long. But does he rub his own urine into his skin? He's not that bad of a coworker, after all, is he? Little bit better, isn't it? Yeah. Now, urine therapy, those are words that should just not go together. Homemade aircraft, stuff like that, there's no reason to ever have those words come together. Urintherapy. Rubbing it in your face and skin, no medical benefit has ever been proven. Urintherapy. This afternoon, I will be stopping Tracy Jones in the hall, and I will be saying, Tracy, until you start rubbing urine into your face and hands and skin, um, you're not nearly as bad a coworker as I thought. Doc Thompson on the Home of the Reds, 700 WLW.